Oh, that sort of porta potty rental and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, that would have been in there, I believe, for, yeah, for the events.
Like tents and things?
Tents and things, I'm not sure would have been in either one of those two.
Okay.
So I'm looking through the printout I've got of the profit and loss statement here. Now, that's funny, 5526 here says. Okay, yeah, so then the 105526, sorry, I, the first time I pulled that up on my QuickBooks here, it said it was just the conference fees, but I guess that was right, like you were saying, just one of the subcategories there. So yeah, of that 5,000, I think that that would be a lot of those tent rentals and that sort of thing.
Okay, so they weren't returnable?
Those checks were written. If they were returned, I'd have to look at how I did that.
Okay.
So I might have, yeah, let me go back and check. If those were returned, I might, and they're not showing up there, it might have been that I, I brought them in as a miscellaneous expense somewhere else or something like that. I just didn't back that up.
Yeah, that's my big question.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
My hand keeps disappearing.
We are assembled.
Seven o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and as we did last month, on the stand and play the allegiance to the flag.
Am I turning it down? Or I'll go in the other room.
Bless allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America, Republic of the United States, our nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have your seat. Looks like everybody's present and accounted for. So, item number two on the agenda tonight, the consent calendar, both of the agenda, the national report for October and the past minute from October 12th work session, October 19th. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The consent calendar is approved. Before we go any further, we have, we have an item of recognition to take care of, and I'm gonna turn, turn the meeting over to Chief Bulley for a moment here, let him tell you what's happened and what is happening, and I think he'll be impressed. I was.
Well, I want to thank you all for your time. Sorry for taking me up so much, but to see you, but I wanted to recognize Officer Garnett. Back before Halloween, he was visiting Cherry Grove Beach, Illinois, Carolina, correct? For, while visiting there, he heard some commotion. And apparently, a band had been playing on a stage. At the end, when the music stopped, he investigated a little bit on the commotion and found that one of the band members actually collapsed on the stage, and he and a retired, I'm not, I'm sorry, off-duty nurse actually performed CPR on this individual, and they, they were successful in providing him until emergency medical care got there and he took over. So, that being said, I want to recognize him for that and let you know that what we do actually does count. We know that you recognize that, and we appreciate your expression of appreciation, but you got a very nice painting from one of the other band members. I'm gonna let him present it to you and give a little more details on the event, because this is how it's done.
Thank you. As she said, yeah, I was visiting, played golf down there, and I wouldn't, just give you a little background, I wasn't supposed, wasn't planning on going to this, this ball there, it was a, a, a fantastic group anyway. So, there was a band playing, a Christian band playing. They weren't supposed to be there either. Another band had backed out, and they filled in it. So as they played, so I would wait getting there. As I got there, they were playing the music, and they were playing the last, one of the last songs, and I, and they just abruptly stopped. I'm like, man, you gonna finish up on that? I mean, just, and the guy said, no, except one of my band members just fell out, and actually he had a heart attack. And so I identified myself as a police officer at my badge, and I immediately jumped into action, and the lady that, I don't know where she was, she wasn't planning on being there either, her name was Nancy, she was a nurse. We both performed CPR for about 14 minutes on this gentleman, which, the medical team came and relieved us. They took him to the hospital, which immediately found that he had two blockages. They found them, removed them. He's got a 100% recovery, and I've been staying in contact with Doug, you know, since that happened, and it just, I told the chief, you know, God works in mysterious ways. I mean, none of us are supposed to be there, but he put us all there at one time, so this has been happened. So, I'm grateful that I was just there to, at the right moment, the right time, to be able to assist this gentleman. They've been very gracious. The band member was a drummer, he did this in about five minutes. He made this for me, and then he also made one for the nurse, frozen in red, white, and blue. This was in blue for us. So he sent this up here, and I just wanted to show you that, present that to you, that that's what they, to show their appreciation for what happened. I'm very humbled by the situation, honestly. This is not one of my things, but this, you know, we're never on duty when we go out of state or to the other councils. So, thank you for your time for listening. I just wanted to present that to you.
Thank you.
And, you know, this points out two things. First is the people that go into the fields of law enforcement, firefighting, of medical care, they do it because they have a concern for their fellow man, and they only just do it because it's probably like some sirens are. Also, it's kind of like in, I used to tell people in funeral service, you are always representing your firm, no matter where you are, because you always have the best behavior. And so, here's, here's a guy, he's representing Scottsville, he's a couple hundred miles away, and he did us good. So, thank you so much for your service to the town and your service to the fellow man.
You're welcome. I'm, I'm, thank you again for that.
And I'm really glad you're here.
I'm glad I'm here too as well. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, we, we all do have a first responder mentality, but that's what overshadows everything else, which we do appreciate you and all you do and keep it. Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good night.
All right.
Take care.
Thank you for sharing.
Next, next on the agenda is the public hearing for the cares appropriations, and I'll call that a public hearing to order. Matt, if you'd like to pull us in on what we're talking about.
Certainly, Mayor. Town Administrator Matt Lawless speaking. The, the town in August made a first appropriation for the first half of the federal CARES Act funding that's come to us on a population formula from Abmaral County and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We reserved the second half of that funding for a later appropriation, waiting to see how the pandemic emergency would progress, and we arrive at that budget decision tonight. The public hearing is required before any change of this size to the town's budget. There's $50,000 of federal CARES Act funding to consider and a number of projects advertised. So the, the public hearing is open for comments on those matters. I'd like to read into the record the acknowledgement of seven restaurants confirmed participating with their interest in the gift certificate food nutrition program through Bread of Life. None of the restaurant owners are here tonight, but they expressed their support for the program in advance. I've not received any other comments in advance.
Anyone from the pub, public wish to speak towards this? I assume that you wish to speak towards, we're talking about the cares money of corporations, and we have, this is a public hearing, we're in the middle of now, if you wish to lay anything on care as possible, grant to Bread of Life.
Welcome, sir. All right, so, so, I'm sorry, step up to the podium and the microphones, yes, speak towards this.
No, if we can answer any questions, I know there's issues with the, I don't know, I think if there's questions, I could answer.
The, the situation is, for those members of the public that are tuned in, we have a presentation by the Bread of Life organization, and after several email back and forth between council people, they had asked a $25,000 grant, we settled on a $20,000 grant to be used for food. The situation at the moment is that we're having a little bit of difficulty, or they have a little difficulty having the contract that needs to be signed, signed by who they thought was going to sign it. So we can have that contract signed before we can think about making the grant. What my suggestion is, is that tonight we go ahead with the $20,000 grant for food bank support. If for some reason the Bread of Life cannot get their contract signed by the end of the week, then we will still use that 20,000 for some other food bank initiative. We want that 20,000 to go towards food, for people that need food.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Do we have, can they have, can the Bread of Life have a little longer than a week, or does it have to be a week?
Well, I say, we're, this, the problem is, we have this public hearing, and if we wait till next month to do this again, we're within, within two weeks of the end of, you know, if we have to find somebody new, we won't have some time to find somebody new to give $20,000 to if we wait till December to decide on this.
That's, that's a good point. All I was gonna say is, whatever the most amount of time we can give them, but at the same time, hey, if Bill is there, does he think they can get it signed this week?
Well, actually, I, we've got a couple people here who might be able to answer that more than I, but we have to find an organization we could get the money to, and then it can come back to us, because we are not an organization, we're not a business. So that is one issue. The other issue is, we do not have insurance, so we have to hook up with somebody who has insurance, which is either the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, or Alvaro, or the town. So we have to take care of these issues first. We may work, we're working with the United, with some of the churches too. So, since we are not a, a business, and we do not have our own nonprofit status, we have to see if we could link up with people on that. So I think, I agree, if we can't do it by the, in the week or next week, that, or we should probably find out by this week if we could do that, then the money shouldn't go elsewhere. But we have some pretty good prospects, but nobody's, nobody's signed in yet.
Any other questions for Bill?
Well, there's a couple people, Bree and Susan, both can answer, as well as I thought about this. We, we, we spent all weekend and all, all morning discussing how to go about doing this, and defining who we were, and we're a ministry, and we provide service, but we are not a business.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Bree Breland, and we, we are looking, we are working with the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, we're a very enthusiastic project, they really like the idea. It's very possible that we'll have to work through as a pastor, if the funding were to go to Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, yeah, Food Bank.
I'm sorry, Bree, if I could interrupt for a second. Matt, we're getting the, the feedback there, if you could mute the town's mic?
Sorry, is, is that better?
Much better, Bree, sorry, go ahead.
So the, if, it, it looks positive that, or very possible that we can work with the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, where the money would go to them, designated specifically for Scottsville, and they would give a pass through back to us as the Bread of Life. We are a ministry that works with them, because they can work either with nonprofits or with faith-based organizations. That would take care of the, the nonprofit issue as well as the insurance issue. We, we should know something in the next couple days about that. Having maybe another week and a half would be kind of nice, just in case. Maybe just until Thanksgiving.
Okay, yeah, let's say today is the 16th week from Thursday, Thanksgiving, so we want to get, get it done before then. So, let's say next Monday, that's gonna, it'll give you seven days, you know, if you, see if you can't get something nailed down by next Monday or before, and then we can make it happen. As long as the money goes to Scottsville, I don't really care who is overseeing it, as long as they meet the qualifications.
Thank you.
Any other council people have questions for, for Bree, or Susan, or Bill?
Question or comment on, go ahead, go ahead, Eddie.
Thank you, Stuart. Governor Northam made an announcement this past week about funding, you know, for the Virginia food banks. Is the Bread of Life gonna be able to take advantage of those funds also? And I'll address this to Bree.
Thank you. I, I am not familiar with how that money's gonna be dispersed. I suspect it will go through the actual food banks. So, the funding generally goes through the food banks.
That's Mark from San Antonio, I can't remember his name, what's that coach's name?
And then the food banks partner, so I suspect some money will be coming to us. We are part of the Thomas Jefferson District within the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. It's a very large area, it covers a large area.
I feel pretty confident that any money that comes from the state to the food banks cannot be designated for a specific area, whereas this 20,000 would have to be designated for Scottsville, I suppose. Any other questions? Stuart, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if, you know, I, I think that's, I would, very much supportive of the Bread of Life Ministry making this happen, but if that, if they are unable to, is there any reason why we couldn't take that money and buy gift certificates or from our restaurants and then figure out a way to distribute them?
I'll let Mayor answer that question.
That's, that's possible. We would need to be mindful of the spending deadline around the end of December.
Right, I mean, we could go out tomorrow and, and spend all that money on gift certificates, find a way to distribute them. Okay?
Okay, any other questions?
I would just elaborate on that to say, the document that Matt sent out, Stuart, if you check your email, Matt sent one out this afternoon, in which we moved the food bank assistance program as a subcategory of small business assistance.
Yeah.
In the thought that if we reached a, a point of needing a Plan B, as long as the appropriation was for a headline there, under small business assistance that included both of those amounts, we could do something like what you're describing.
Okay.
And call that small business assistance.
Let me, hey, Stuart?
Yeah.
Just, Dan, just following up on what you just said, and Thomas, clarify if, if I'm saying this the correct way, but basically, maybe as a fallback position, correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, we would get, we would take the money, buy the stuff, and then give the certificates to the food bank? Could that work?
Yes.
Or we could figure a way to distribute ourselves, or, or whatever.
Well, well, the reason I'm, the reason I'm saying, if we bought it and then gave the, gave the gift certificates to the food bank, we'd be back empowering them to do their mission versus us trying to do their mission. So we're, we would be, I think it would be, maybe as a, as a Plan B or C or D, or whatever it is, could be that we do this if it has to happen, we get their gift certificates, and then we put them in the hands back in the food bank and let them distribute them. If, that would be my thought.
Yeah, that, that, I'm fine. Yep.
I, I think there'd be a lot of flexibility in how you could administer that program, where there's less flexibility is with our constraints on, on holding these public hearings and advertising for the appropriation. And so this is really our last opportunity to take a stab at that. So whatever you pass tonight, yeah, those sorts of Plan Bs, you know, might be helpful to keep in mind.
Thomas, so, so for example, if we said, we want to designate this $20,000 to the blue, to the food, to the food bank, if that is not able to happen by whatever the date is, what we're gonna do then is we're going to take that same amount of money, buy the gift certificates from these restaurants, and then give it to the food bank. Like, could we say that all as one, one idea tonight?
We don't have to be that specific. This is much more like when we pass our budget at the beginning of the year. We're just sort of passing the, the headlines that say, this amount of money is going to be requisitioned for this purpose. And, and the only change that we've made to what we discussed last time was that Matt and I moved the money for this food assistance program to, instead of being a standalone category, where if we could not do something that looked directly like food assistance, we might be out of luck and have that money sitting there without a chance to re-appropriate it for a second purpose. We've moved that as a subcategory of the small business grants to give us the, the leeway to do something like what you're describing, Dan, if we're unable to give the money directly to the food bank.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense to me. I just, whatever, Laura, what do you think of all this?
Well, I, I have a question for those of you that are volunteering with the Bread of Life Ministry, and that is, is this collaboration with the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank something that's viable long-term versus just this immediate conversation? Because I'm also concerned about the long-term support that the system has and for our residents that are in need. So I, I do think that we can get through the immediate two months ahead of us with a couple of plans that have been discussed tonight, but I'm, I want to make sure that there's also something in process to help you in through the winter and, and ongoing.
Sure, sure. We, we actually do have an agreement with Blue Ridge Area Food Bank for the Bread of Life. We receive our USDA food from them on a weekly basis.
Right, that I'm aware of, yeah.
And that's been, that's been going on for a long time.
Okay, so it's just, it's really the fiscal, like where the money is housed for those extra initiatives that you're overseeing with the ministry then. Okay.
And, and we really appreciate all the support that, that you all are giving us and recognizing the need that's out there.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much for that clarification.
I think it's pretty well firm and then decided that everyone wants to see this $20,000 go towards our people here in Scottsville.
Nancy, we're picking up some audio from you there.
Any other comments?
Let me just add, this is Susan Cable, that I think that this program is an opportunity to really expand the program, to the extent that we have enough storage space for the, for the food, and to bring a lot of good publicity to the town as well. And we're gonna work on that and promoting it as best we can.
I, I agree with you on that, Susan, and it's, it's unfortunate that there is a question with the person at the, at this church that has the power to sign the contract, but any other comments? And I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the mayor's report, which is not a lot different than I gave you at the work session, so I'm not gonna go through all that, other than tell you that the chief and I met with Matt and Thomas for about an hour this morning. We're talking about new police vehicles, replacement of police vehicles. We had a couple of unfortunate incidents, and one car needs to be replaced totally. So they're working on the best way to do that, and that'll be coming before you next month. I want to thank the fire department and all the volunteers that got the gate up at Ferry Street last week when the water got so high, and the people that volunteered to run the pumping station. And, you know, we've talked a lot about Tiger Fuel lately. Well, I was in, after I left the, the river, I came up to see Matt, and the fuel level at the pump house was getting in an abrupt situation. He called Tiger, and within 30 minutes, they had a truck down here to fill up the tanks at the pump station. So that was just the way they work. Any questions for me? I don't have anything else to afford on. So we'll go to the item number five on our agenda, committee reports. Mr. Payne, would you like to start?
Well, I am the town council liaison to the planning commission. It was my first venture into the planning convention, and I was really impressed with the way the, the citizens of our community have come together on the, on the commission. They, they take their job really seriously, so I just wanted to pass that impression alone. Just to keep it short, we had three proposals. One was for the Airbnb at 305 Valley Street. We had questions and discussions, and a vote of four, four, zero opposed to pass this application on to the town council for their vote. The same being with the 153 James River Road location where Tiger Fuel applied for a special operating permit for a car wash and a drive-through. Questions, discussions, public input by way of either attendance at the meeting or by Zoom. We had representatives of Tiger Fuel. They answered all the questions to the satisfaction of the planning commission, I believe, because there was a vote of four to zero in favor of passing this on to town council for a vote. And the final item was the West Downtown plan that a lot of people have worked on. There's been a lot of discussion on it, and again, the commission voted four to zero to pass this on to town council for a vote.
And public safety report, sir? Anything further?
I, I would think that the most pressing issue that we discussed, you know, were the two incidents, as Amaya alluded to. And we lost a vehicle and we, we damaged a vehicle. And there is a question of, you know, how are we going to replace one of the vehicles? And there seems to be an available vehicle at a good price. Chief Bullock seems to be in favor of purchasing this. And just based on my past experiences with rescue vehicles especially, but just trying to equip these vehicles. This is a used vehicle. It's owned by an individual that purchased it from a company that actually goes out and, you know, uses this type of vehicle as a, as a demo. So if you're going to put a demonstration vehicle out there, you can rest assured it's going to be the best they've got to offer. And there's no way that we could, you know, purchase same vehicle at the price that the individual is asking for. So that's, you know, a future discussion.
Yeah, we talked about that this morning also and how we might find financing through USDA like we've done in the past. And that's certainly that already equipped Dodge Charger is, is right up there on top of lists to replace the car. So thank you so much for your report. Is Supervisor Price on there anywhere tonight?
No, sir. She had a conflict here at the moment, but she sent a couple of, she sent a couple of notes. She's at the Village of Vivana Community Advisory Committee meeting on the other end of the district. She sent about a paragraph to you and me. Would you like me to read that?
Sure, why don't you go ahead?
She shares, Supervisor Donna Price on the Admiral County Board of Supervisors shares that the biggest item coming up on this week's board supervisors meeting is reconsideration of the emergency ordinance for the COVID-19 pandemic, which expires for Admiral County at midnight on the 18th, Wednesday. Consequently, the board has to act on it on Wednesday. Prior to the dramatic increase in COVID cases around the country, Supervisor Price was considering lowering our current gathering size limitations. With the situation being as it is, in spite of the local region being the only one in the Commonwealth with a sense of stability and with the input coming in from many individuals and groups, in conjunction with the governor's recent tightening of rules at the present time and in the absence of evidence to sway otherwise, the supervisor is not inclined, is inclined to not look to reduce our restrictions. There will be active discussion on the matter. Folks encouraged dissent thoughts and the board will have that decision on Wednesday. Besides that, they have a pretty light agenda. So not expecting much of a report, but looks forward to chatting with us on Wednesday.
Good, yeah. We've started a new, new thing. Supervisor Price will be here on Thursday afternoon to meet with Matt and myself and discuss the previous evening's board supervisors meeting and what came out of that. So if anybody wants to join us, we can certainly make that happen.
I, I have one question there. This is, I guess, sort of related to the county and COVID restrictions. Cause a question a couple of months ago that we asked was what is our responsibility as a town in relation to county level COVID restrictions or plans? I, I think it'd be good to get, I think it'd still be good to get some clarification about that just so that we know what our responsibility is in terms of communicating those things or enforcing them.
Okay, we'll certainly make note to talk to her about that on Thursday. And do another, other research we need to do to answer that question sufficiently. Mr. Bullock, since you have the microphone, why don't you go ahead with the ARB report?
Sure, I will unmute myself. Two updates, one about a building and one about a meeting. The building is Canal Basin Warehouse. It's been the victim of vandalism recently. And so I, I want to mention that in this public forum so that people know. That's one of our most historic buildings in town and certainly perhaps the oldest. And in any event, its preservation is really important to this town and the Neighbors Brothers who've been working out of and doing such exceptional craftsmanship. It's worth to keep your eyes and ears open about a potential activity down there that shouldn't be. The Neighbors Brothers are going to be increasing security at the site with lighting and alarms. So I think that'll move us in the right direction. The police department's been informed, but I wanted to make sure that was on the public's radar. The ARB will also be holding a special meeting this Thursday to discuss our design guidelines for fences. In the historic overlay district, any fence over three and a half feet requires a certificate of appropriateness before it's built. And, but our design guidelines that inform how those fences are designed in the collaborative process that we go through to come to those COAs is underdeveloped. It's currently a paragraph long. And so we're going to be pulling some resources from a couple of different localities as well as from our vice chair Erin Root, that she's gathered along the way as well, so that we can make ours a little more robust and, but also provide some clear direction for how to design fencing when those COAs come our way. That's all for me unless you have, unless anyone has questions.
All right, how about Dan, you got anything on parks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to share would be, our former mayor has organized an event on the 21st of November that I am helping her with. It's a get acquainted event at the park. There'll be a couple of tours offered at nine and 11. And those tours will take people who are interested into the Van Cleef nature area. I will be part of the guides in that process, come one, come all, on the 21st to learn more about the Van Cleef nature area. This stems from a project that Nancy is working on with a neighboring community of ours. So it's a nice way to help expand the Emerald Necklace, learn about what's happening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate all you do. Laura, anything on events?
Yes, so we have, join us on Saturday, November 28th for Shop Local Shop Small. It's our historic date also for our town lighting ceremony. Lights will be switched on at Canal Basin Square at 6:00 PM. Due to COVID health guidelines and concerns, there will not be a formal gathering or any caroling. But if you would like to get out of the house with your family for the evening, please do take a walk downtown. We'd love to see you. We are also seeking volunteers to help transform Canal Basin Square into the holiday display earlier in the day on that Saturday, the 28th, from nine to one. So again, we invite those of you in the, in the public listening in or watching this recording later, as well as those of you reading notes to join us. The committee is also encouraging all uptown and downtown businesses to participate and decorate for the holiday season. So the best holiday spirit business that's inclusive of multiple holidays will receive some sort of prize, help pass the word along. Events and tourism committee also approved purchasing banners for some of our lamp posts. As we were preparing for holiday decor, we noticed some of the holiday greenery was worn and in need of replacements. So you will see some new banners, we hope to arrive this year, that will welcome residents and guests to Scottsville that can remain up throughout the winter season. So that'll be a nice change of pace. Committee members are also partnering very closely with the Chamber of Commerce this winter to encourage more of our local businesses to add their information to the Charlottesville tourism website, the Lynchburg tourism website and the Richmond tourism website. And we're still exploring finding an intern to assist businesses in the committee with this task. Finally, for those of you, Bread of Life, we had a really good discussion about ways to increase marketing efforts, all of which are at no cost. So I will be reaching out to try and find the best person for that so that we can start working towards those goals.
Laura, I'd be happy to meet with you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Ms. Cable. And then, as Ms. Gritzko just mentioned, in the spirit of National Take a Hike Day, please do visit the farmer's market this Saturday on November 20th from nine to 12. For here has tours of Van Cleef nature as well as Scottsville Historic Sites. When you've completed your walk, go back to the market because it is also the market's holiday markets. And there's tie dyeing, face masks, local goods. For more information, check out Scottsville Events and Festivals. In terms of farmer's market, I just mentioned the holiday market. Just a simple reminder, when you do come, please wear your face mask. Maintain six foot feet of distance per the governor's updated order as you complete your holiday shopping locally. And government services was very busy this month. So town council, expect from us quite a few documents next month. They will include a town financial policy for your review and recommendation. We also spent quite a bit of discussion on town capital improvement plan. And we have two plans that resulted versus just one. One is a CIP based on asset insurance value of our current assets and buildings that we own. There are known things that we need to replace. For example, roofs last, you know, 25 years, right? So we know that's a cost of 25 years. HVAC systems last 15 years. We know that's a cost in 15 years. Our pumps last 30 plus years. We know that's a cost coming up. So we're going to create a CIP plan based on those known entities of things we're currently responsible for with recommendations. Once that's established, over the next couple of weeks, we'll pull out and see what's remaining for special project capital recommendations for us to discuss as well. We also took time to review our town maintenance tasks. The committee is very likely to recommend the second part-time staff wage position to help in the summer months. And as you all noticed, we weren't quite able to keep up with everything in our new model of part-time staff and contracts. So trying to help meet, meet ends both fiscally but as well as what the town needs. The committee also recommends keeping restrooms locked whenever town facilities are not in active use during the COVID pandemic. So as we proceed with COVID and into the winter months, if it's not in use, we just recommend keeping those locked to maintain sanitation. Mr. Lawless, I hope will update us later, but he's overseeing progress on both CSX project as well as the Market Pavilion projects. I can, I can let you all know in this update that they are proceeding forward. So please reach out to him with questions later in the meeting. Also, I shared with town council members, Virginia Outdoors Foundation has some great, great opportunity that was shared with us by a private citizen. So a huge shout out and a thank you. Happy to assist with details if we are wanting to look into that further before their December 18th deadline. And finally, I confirmed with the Government Services Committee members that past town council vacancy candidates have all been interviewed in the past by council prior to making any appointment. Any questions?
You've been busy.
Yes.
Busy?
Yes, and I'm going to help all of you remain busy too. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Monson, Economic Development.
Yeah, two things. Matt and I have identified another interested party in the factory. We did a tour with them today. They seem interested and after having seen it. And the real estate agent for the owner was there as well too. So it looked, it looked like it's going to continue to be investigated. So that's a good thing. The second thing is I have reached out and just following up on what Council Bullock was talking about with our, our warehouse. I absolutely agree that that's a real gem that, that I would love to see the town hold on to and, and restore and use for something. So I reached out to the owner's commercial real estate agent and let her know that the town is interested in seeing what we can do to help find possibly a buyer for that property, help with historic preservation loans, maybe find somebody who could buy that and then continue to fund Mr. Neighbor's work on it since he is doing such a good job on that. So there's the two things we're working on.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone have any questions for anybody who's spoken so far? Okay, did I miss anybody? I don't think so. One thing to remember too is that Supervisor Price left us with a full list of all the community advisory committee that are in existence in the county and those that pertaining to Scottsville and those that have openings. And so check with, get your friends, if you want to get them involved, check with Matt and he can fill you in.
If, if I may, I heard a particular note and request on that today. One of the important vacancies active now is in the Charlottesville-Admiral Convention and Visitors Bureau as that group works with some new staff and some new programs to navigate a recession that's hitting our tourism businesses very hard. They really need a high performing board and they have a vacancy that they're recruiting for, for a, a space for a tourism oriented business owner. And the director asked me to get the word out here in this area. So if, if anyone listening is active in that field and is willing to give some time away from their business and their family to help organize tourism promotion in the city and county region, that board needs the help. The application is on the Admiral County website and they hope to make an appointment next month.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Item six on the agenda is items for us to discuss and take action on. First three with the recommendation of the planning commission, we need to call for public hearings on those three items. And that would be done at our December meeting. And talking about our December meetings, this is as good a spot as any. Our December meeting's on December 21st, which is Christmas week. And even though travel these days is iffy at best and you may not be going anywhere, talking with the town staff, we thought maybe, what do you all think about having our December meeting on Friday, the 18th? And that would just free up the entire Mexico, two weekends plus the week in between if anybody does need to travel. Anybody have any problems with having our meeting on December the 18th, Friday? Okay, we'll go ahead. I don't think that's something we have to vote on, is it?
Yes, to move the date and call the public hearing.
Okay, so let's do that then. Do I have a motion to have our December council meeting and figure this at the same time? Three public hearings on Friday, December the 18th at seven o'clock.
Well, I just have one comment. I know there's, there are three things up there for public comment. And I wonder if public viewership might be lower on a Friday than a Monday. I'm, I'm happy to meet on the 21st. I'm not going anywhere. I, I want to make sure that the public, I mean, those are big, those are big ticket items. So I want to make sure that the public is able, is aware and able to do it. And I fear if we change our schedule, people just won't remember or know to, to drop in or be busy on a Friday.
Or anywhere either, but how about the rest of you?
My question was, was a Thursday evening instead of a Friday, just for the same concern that if a Friday, mentally, most of us sort of are done with the week. So we're not ready to plug in to a special meeting. But at least the Thursday might be a compromise where it's still within the week. Folks haven't traveled. If they are going to travel for the weekend, we still have another workday ahead of us, but it maintains that 21st date.
Well, instead of having our work session that week, you want to have our council meeting that week and have a work session when you like the week before?
I like that suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, what's that? When is that Monday?
We have planning commission on Monday and ARB on Thursday of the first week of the month.
So this is second, second Monday of the month is our normal work session. You want to have our normal regular December meeting on the 14th?
What happens to the work session?
If you do that one night prior, previous week, then they're by screen.
The ARB meeting is going to be the third of December?
Oh, yeah. Let, let me, Mr., Mr. Mayor, let me, this is Dan, let me just ask the question. Cause I do appreciate the thought of not meeting on the 21st, but I think Zach made a point. I don't see a problem with meeting on the 21st and I think he doesn't. Maybe we should poll to see who actually does because Maybe we should poll to see who actually does because I, I do think the idea of maintaining continuity with us, making it simple, this is getting really complicated.
That's a good point, you know, and if everybody's going to be in town, let's do it on 21st like it's scheduled. I just didn't want to come up on 21st and we have two people show up on the screen and then so we have to, can't do any business.
Well, with, if, if that's the problem, we'll invite Santa Claus and Jesus and we'll get everybody there for Christmas. No, but any, any other town counselors, anybody have a problem with the 21st?
I'm going to be here.
I'll be here.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, Mr. Huffman?
That works for me.
All right, just keep it on 21st then. So I need a motion to, to have these three public hearings on the 21st.
I moved that we have the three public hearings on the 21st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want to close? Okay, we have a regular meeting on the 21st of December. We'll have three public hearings on that night. And item 6D is our CARES Act budget appropriation. So I'll turn it back over to Matt here and he can make sure we all know what we're voting on here.
The, the newspaper ad about the public hearing that we held this evening listed general project ideas related to county administration, education and workforce, health outreach and small business assistance. It also mentioned a nutrition partnership. The ad did not list the specific amounts for those categories. And in work session, we've been revising those numbers a little bit. The most recent change was today in discussion with the Greta Life folks about how best to structure that partnership. So for the record briefly, the line item numbers before you now is an increase to the administration category from 5,000 to 12,500. That funding supports our digital meetings, equipment needs and staff time related to pandemic emergency work. If funding allows, that is the pool that would provide some hazard pay for staff who worked during the critical period of the spring. In the education and workforce category, we have an increase of $5,000 from 15 to 20,000. That will allow a month or two more work of the Stan Community Center downstairs, but would not fully fund the entire second half of this year. In item three, health outreach, that supports outreach, outreach events and PPE distribution, hand sanitizer distribution. Here in the room with us is a large supply of hand sanitizer and masks that we are going to be able to distribute to the public shortly. The largest increase is in small business grants and aid programs, which includes the nutrition partnership with the food bank in support of local restaurants. That increase is from 25,000 to 57,500. So the, the total change is 32,500. Yes, 32,500. So the new total is $100,000. Council is certainly free to modify these amounts. We'll discuss any other details. But again, the care funding needs to be spent before the end of the calendar year or it returns to the federal government.
Okay, so what we need is a motion and then we'll have a discussion. So do I hear a motion to accept these figures as presented with the distribution of CARES funds?
Yeah, I moved to accept the budget amendment with appropriations for CARES Act projects.
Is there a second?
I second.
Now we're open for discussion. So whoever wants to discuss, start. No discussion? Everybody comfortable with these figures and the categories they are applied? Think this was sort of, this particular breakdown was doing a lot to help from Laura on this. Appreciate her hard work on that. Seems fair and equitable to anybody, everybody involved. So without a motion, without a second, and we have had our discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 On budget matters.
Okay, budget matters, not my mistake. We need a poll vote.
Thank you very much. Let's see, councillor Payne?
Yes.
Councillor Bullock?
Yes.
Councillor Malusi?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
And councillor Gritsco?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The motion carries.
Hey, Mr. Heinzworth, are we doing staff reports next? Since you've got the mic, you want to do yours first?
Actually, if I could, I think, I think we needed to interject something here. Six C, Jeff had asked us about that police car. And if we're doing these three other public hearings, it would be as fine a time as any to call a public hearing on that appropriation as well. If you wanted staff to take the intervening month to do the, the staff work on that. I think Matt had sent this out in an email to you guys ahead of time. Matt, do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
That's right. Thank you, sir. I apologize for the, for the short notice, but you, you, you heard the police department discussion and work session and more recently about the desire to return to five vehicles in the fleet or to replace the police pickup truck, which is not pursued. They would prefer to replace it with a police equipped vehicle. They had an offer for the used vehicle, which Public Safety Committee heard and was discussed at work session. We've also been doing some staff work on the, one of the town's prior practices, which is USDA grant and loan packages. We've used those for at least three vehicles in the past. It's a good combination of grant loans to secure a good price on a new vehicle. But in, in either case, if you, if council wants to support the police at this time with a new vehicle purchase, we do need a public hearing and a, and a budget amendment to our capital section. I'm afraid I, I don't have exact pricing on what the USDA package would be, but I'm confident that it's less than the 25,000 offered for the used vehicle. So the, the form of the action, if council desires, would be to advertise an amendment to our capital budget and, and put a ceiling on that. What would be the most you would be willing to spend on police vehicles? And we can present options within that amount. I'm sorry, it's not all clear.
And if I could, Matt, in addition to the, the amount, we would need direction on where the source of funding comes from. So, you know, it could be 25,000 from reserve for the used vehicle or a similar amount from grants and loans that would direct us to go through USDA.
That's, that's correct. We have to specify the revenue source.
I'll address this toward Matt and Thomas. So as far as insurance on the total vehicle, where, where do we stand there?
We've received one payment for the, the damage to Jeff's vehicle that's undergoing replacement. They're still working on the larger claim.
The total is about 14,000 for the two. So one, one change to the budget to be realistic would be to show $14,000 of new revenue from insurance.
So with the $25,000 asking price, modest insurance, it's not that big a hit as we normally take, right?
That's right. If you, if you wanted to move ahead with that, you could show the insurance revenue plus use of reserves to make the purchase.
Thank you.
But you, you also mentioned there was a grant available?
The USDA grant and loan program is what we've done in the past. They'll give us 75% of the cost of a vehicle and loan us the remaining. The grant portion goes up to $50,000. At that point, we're taking a loan on any, any amount over that. So the current loan that we have was for $9,000 for the pickup truck. They granted us $27,000 for the remaining total purchase price of $36,000 on that.
That's right. So I think you would have roughly similar numbers on a new police vehicle, but it would take longer to get into service to order it due to grant fully equipped.
Right, I guess, I, I mean, I, I'm comfortable having this conversation in December. But I'm just like going to need to see all, it's like having a hard time with all the numbers in my small head. So it sounds like we need to set like a roof, ceiling rather, for cost, what we're willing to spend. And I just, I just need to see all this broken down in terms of what, you know, we'd be able to get for a grant for a new vehicle. I also wanted to see priorities for vehicles. You know, I know the truck is a thing. We have a truck. Should we get rid of the, should we sell the, can we sell the truck to get a new one? But I know Laura mentioned, we already have a town truck. Laura mentioned, no, do we want to keep that other truck around? So I have two town trucks. So I just need to see like some more, like sort of a priorities of vehicles as well as the costs associated with replacing them. And then our various options, sounds like grant, insurance, what that's going to cover and then just how much is left over for us to pay.
And government services has been working diligently on capital improvement plan, but it's, it's not quite there. So I suppose you would also be in your rights to, to wait and see how the rest of this fit with the full CIP.
Right, because the original CIP had that for a couple of years from now, not, not this year or next year. Yeah.
You know, if we, we can take this up at the December work session and have, have pretty much the, all the facts and figures we need to make a decision and then we'll have our public hearing if I hear a motion for our December meeting on this expenditure for new police vehicles.
Well, if I could, before we get the motion, because the motion would need to include the source of funding, which does kind of lock us into one avenue here or another. So if, if council is not decided yet on, on which avenue to pursue there, you know, the concern that Jeff expressed to the mayor and to us this morning was that the used vehicle might not be an option forever. And, but I think you guys are all aware of that reality. So if you would like us to take the, the month to get you guys in a better position to, to make that decision, I think we could call the public hearing, we could take the December meeting to call the public hearing for January. But otherwise, you guys would have to make a motion that would include the amount and the funding source, either grants and loans or reserve spending.
Okay, so that probably is the best course, right? Is that okay with public safety?
I'd like to see, well, we're talking about a new vehicle. I'd like to see, you know, the, the cost of the new vehicle and then the cost of equipping it and making it, you know, cruiser ready as opposed to the used vehicle that is already in that, you know, condition now.
The $36,000 loan total package, loan and grant package for the truck did include all of the aftermarket work that we did to get it ready. All the decals, the lights on the roof, the various outfittings inside of the truck. All of that was done aftermarket and it was covered by that grant loan program.
We can analyze that if the equipment costs, it will be more.
Gentlemen, do we still have active loans then that we're paying? I mean, it sounds like we're still paying, we have a loan, active loan on the truck. Are there other police vehicles that we're still paying for?
No, the truck is the only active loan. I, I believe that they'd ask us to close out that loan on the truck before we originate a new loan and that balance is at about $2,000 right now.
Thank you for that info.
Sure.
And then we'll ask, we'll ask staff to have us some comparison figures so we can look at those at our next work session and then we'll be ready to take an additional proceeding.
I, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I am, but I also know we're like down a vehicle. So I also don't want to leave our police department strapped for wheels. So is this, is this timing urgent enough, I guess is my question.
We were plus one vehicle because we recently had a surplus come in from Abmaro County. So we're, we're back to where we were three months ago. We have, we have one vehicle for each vehicle.
Yeah. And then I get, yes, okay. All right, that's good. Well, I guess that might be a good reason to have a spare vehicle around too, as Chief O'Lincoln mentioned last time. But I still think it'd be helpful to know like what do we, what's the minimum we need to run our, our police department and then sort of add on from there. That's going to be helpful for me in my decision making.
Right, okay. We'll go through all that in 14th December. Matt, if you have any other comments, Thomas gave his report up.
Is Ms. Gill still on the call?
No, I believe we have lost her.
And I can share a little bit of the, the here outreach work. As we said, the HICA hike event coming up on Saturday. We'll accomplish some health outreach and we'll get some distribution. You'll also see CARES funded hygiene stations going into businesses and community sites around town shortly. At the beginning of November, Thomas Jefferson Health District did a COVID testing event in our region. They have 100 test kits available. In our six county region of the health district, we're seeing 15 to 20 new cases of COVID per day. That's keeping the hospital less than full. But the concern continues and the statewide numbers are not looking so good. So as Supervisor Price mentioned, we have new regulations from the governor's office trying to stop that spread. In more immediate local emergency work, we had a significant flood warning from Hurricane Ada last week. Scottsville Volunteer Fire Department very active with pumping and they're, they took the opportunity to complete their annual exercise at the gate closure at Ferry Street. The river crested a little bit over 19 and a half feet, which was its highest level since 2010. And the fire department volunteers were working continuously from Wednesday night until Saturday morning. This was a significant event for them. And as said, we went through our fuel supply real quickly and had to make an emergency restart on that. But all of our contract members and volunteers worked all together in that. That flooding also included some liaison with CSX. They did, they were, how can I say? On staff and on site, running up and down the line on that dig. I didn't see evacuation or movement of any of their gear. I thought this might be one where the water got up to the tracks and shut down the train on the rivers, but it didn't quite. The forecast was looking more like 22 feet and then it ended up. So CSX staff were present, but I, I don't know that they actually moved or evacuated.
No, they did, they didn't move anything. But I will say, having, watching them all day, they, they were there multiple times, which was good. Certainly the most action we've seen from them just being present. But the water got real close. Water got real close and, and there was some of their stuff in the water. I mean, their cement barriers did not move off the bank. They had a big, they had a big truck down there that could have moved it because I saw them move those things with a similar truck before. They didn't move. So I think that's, I think that's worth following up with them about.
Of course. Likewise with CSX, we did finally get a contractor replaced in the first round of work for the CSX grant on a restoration along East Main Street. That is the local business, Wild Ginger Field Services, which offers excellent pricing and a very responsible approach to native plants and maintaining the interesting ecology there at the old canal. It's described very well as a remnant industrial site. It's really a disparate habitat for the better part of 200 years. So we, we don't want to kill everything there. They're going to take a more gradual approach destroying the invasives and uncovering the native plants that are there. And they will document that as a learning activity. It should make for some good public outreach with our B-City and Native Plants approach.
Good. Matt, who's, who's going to be responsible for maintaining that? Because I know once, once those things are planted, the invasives can come back quickly if it's not maintained.
Their, their scope of work altogether runs about a year and a half. If we want to continue to. If we want to continue the project ongoing after that, it will have to be supported another way. If there's no further CSX grant funding, we would look for, um, a town staff or volunteer operation.
Okay. I mean, it's kind of a big undertaking, it seems, because there's a lot of land. Is that something that we can just get in the pipeline with CSX for? Like say, hey, Randy Marcus, that $5,000 worked really well and look at what it did to get it again.
Right, to do the maintenance of that area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might be wise as a, um, conversation to start now and share the results and expect to have some maintenance going forward.
Yeah, they've been very, um, uh, they were quick with the second $7,000 after sending us the first five. I would think if we can show some good progress, they'd hopefully be responsive to that, continue being quick with the checkbook.
I, I would certainly like that. And if we can work out a contract arrangement with someone who can do this work like this company here, that I think that would be a nice way to get it off the town shoulders and continue to keep us in CSX's line of sight and, uh, working towards improving that corridor.
The, um, the other, uh, active staff work development I mentioned earlier was, um, grant work in progress for the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. That's, um, foundation funding available for the, um, acquisition and preservation of new habitat and public spaces. And, um, we had some discussion earlier about that funding opportunity lining up well with the West Antown Small Area Plan. So I'm working on that application, uh, but I'm not listing any town matching funding in it. We don't have that budget commitment and I don't want to make that commitment on a short notice application. So I'll, um, I'll try to scope that. The grant does not require a local match. So if there's no objection from council, I'll, I'll send that in with, um, uh, about a, between a 50 and $100,000 request from the Outdoors Foundation and no town match.
And Matt, is it possible though to mention a match as in kind? So, so to mention the things that the town would contribute towards the project that may not increase the dollar amount?
Yes, the application asks for us to describe the, um, uh, the maintenance and, and what happens to the initial funding. So we can provide our maintenance obligations on land that we have.
Okay, great.
Anything else for Matt or Thomas?
Yeah, one thing I'd just like to add, I wanted to say thank you to Laura for catching me on the, the first iteration of that, financial statement that I sent out. I just wanted to give anybody a chance, see if there are any questions, make sure that that was clear, what the mistake was and what the, the fix was. When we did the initial appropriation there of $50,000 for the CARES funding, we had $20,000 in the budget already as a placeholder for expected federal aid for, uh, the disaster. I rounded that 20 up to the 50 that we had appropriated, not thinking, uh, about what we did with the 20 on the other side of our budget. The 20,000 that we initially put in, we had expected would essentially be revenue replacement money the federal government would give us to spend on our own operations. So that was how we balanced the budget. The 50,000, now $100,000 that we've appropriated for CARES, of course, is not revenue replacement. It's for new programmatic spending associated with the pandemic. So, uh, I put that $20,000 of expected federal revenue back in the budget to make this balance, uh, now at 589 instead of 569. But what this reveals is a $20,000 hole in our budget where we are still relying on expected federal revenue or a federal relief in the form of revenue replacement that at the moment, there's no expectation of. And we can, uh, talk a lot more about that as we go into our mid-year budget discussions at the next work session.
Anything else, committee body? We have a vacancy interview. When is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, that is seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, and the participants are aware of the time and they?
Yes, they've got, um, separate appointments to call in.
All right.
Is I going to question about in person or Zoom, Mr. Mayor?
I think we might as well do the Zoom.
We can, we can do this. We can, um, for, for a closed meeting on Zoom, we can limit drop-in guests and the two applicants have, um, appointed times to join us. So we'll, we'll talk to the one and the other.
Okay, yeah, if you would, just drop us an email, let us know, you know, date, time, place.
Got it.
Okay.
Follow-up question about that, and this might be for Government Services. Do we have a script of questions to ask the applicants? Do we make sure we're asking them the same things?
I'm not prepared, but that is a wise question and a wise plan.
Okay.
So this, this, um, I, we also don't have the applicant's letters. So my request was to have those sent to all council in advance.
Yeah.
And then, um, we can cater questions if this is helpful to council kind of towards the areas that we oversee.
And the, um, I, the staff role on that should be very minimal. I would encourage council members to please put those together on Zoom. I'm, I'm not comfortable reviewing my process.
Yeah, I have no problem with the script, but I just want to make sure that we have some flexibility to ask questions that are not script as they come up.
It's a good taste if you're asking where we work to. Mainly, you know, I, I would ask, uh, why do you want to do this and what are your qualifications? Do you think you have enough talent to commit to something like this? So those would be my three main questions. Anything else?
So I just, I wanted to speak up. I spent a couple hours at the, um, flood, flood controls during the height of the waters, um, this past week. And I again, just want to reiterate my thanks to Mr. Lawless, to Mr. Carr and to all the Scottsville volunteers. We end up, it, six individuals are giving four hours of their time at a chunk to sit and keep those pumps running and to watch the Nink Creek flood levels, to check the gates. I'm quite impressed now that I have a better understanding of how that all works. We have a great engineering asset within our town that I wish I could show off more, but I don't want to because that means that we're constantly tackling the ladders. Um, but I just, I really did appreciate the time that I got to spend with a couple of the volunteers and understanding that better. So again, my, my huge thanks to all of them for keeping this town, um, safe and guarded.
And, and we did make a front page in the Daily Progress. Isn't that exciting? So anything else for anyone? We'll get back together on Wednesday night and see if we can fill this empty chair down here on the end. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move the lead adjourned.
Second, second, anybody?
Oh, Zach had it. Yeah, I heard you, Zach.
Aye.
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 Y'all have a nice evening.
Be healthy, y'all.
Thank you all very much.